Call this meeting to order. All rise with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call been taken?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we have for us the consent calendar, city commission meeting minutes, the park advisory meeting minutes, the harbor master report, the marine advisory committee minutes, the 11th Street sewer development agreement, and the Oxford House update. I just want to note for the commission's record that the 11th Street sewer agreement just came in. And so if the commission wishes to kick that to or postpone its signature until the end of the meeting after maybe a recess to review it, that way we're not just putting in the consent calendar blind.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I'm going to use unanimous consent to pull or to lay item three E onto the table and put it to the end of the meeting, probably around, we'll move it right after eight A. There are no objections, so ordered. That leaves the consent calendar A through E to approve. Is there any changes to the agenda or is there a motion to the consent calendar? Business items? Okay, do you want to make that item seven, we see D? Okay, item seventeen. That's the one, that's the harbor place, the harbor policy, the harbor property is that we're supposed to referring to? Yeah, okay. All right. Is there any objection to that addition? All right, hearing none, so ordered. Item seven D will be the property discussion, Commissioner Sossio. All right, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Moving seconded to approve the consent counter as presented, noting the further amendment on item eating moved off. So all those in favor say aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Poe?
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner Sossio?
The Christmas Easter time is April 12 at the City Park. For those that don't have little children or want to avoid little children, it is also the day of the first steps color run in for students, I believe. So it goes for another early fun activity. We consider supporting for steps, great organization. Liz Ricken is the current chair of Spur's book and I attended economic vitality 101 today. We had the privilege of being invited to participate in the main street organizations, economic vitality, I guess. They're hosting ongoing webinars and so we attended that and had a lot of really great insights. And then we are wrapping up the application for the big main street revitalization grant. The only applicant that we had or request was for outpost building, so that is due Thursday, but we have more grants in the pipeline, so I will look back when those opportunities present themselves.
Thank you, Commissioner Sossio. I appreciate it. See you, Major.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone, the budget committee meeting is on May 10th. Please save the date for that. And then I'll save one item for good of the order, but I did want to mention tonight, the residence on, I believe it's Russell, it was Mr. May, that item, that was at
King Street.
King Street, I'm sorry. 1372, I believe, King Street has been remediated since it was declared a nuisance. And our code compliance officer does believe it meets now our criteria and he will be sending them notice to let them know. I will update with a memo. I do not have it tonight, but I will update with a memo and photos, but they have removed all items out of the right of way and they have cleaned up the yard as well. Very, very significant, very dramatic change. So we are very pleased with that process. And that is thanks to our code compliance officer working with those, that homeowner.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's great to hear. City Recorders? All right. The only thing I have is that I had a meeting with, I won't go into the legal aspects of it, but we had a legal meeting on the organs for floodplain protection. And it seems that there has been some positive developments on the federal side related to that. And, and so I'll leave it at that and there'll probably be a memo coming out of legal for that. But I just wanted to note that it was some positive developments. We'll know more on the 18th, so. The also thing I'll note is March 28th, the Ways and Means Committee is coming of the legislature to Astoria. So I'll be testifying in front of that. And I encourage anybody that wants to to come and observe that. That's the budget writing, basically, a committee for the whole entire state legislature. And that's a big deal for them to come to Astoria and their kind of road showing across the state. So with that, we'll move on to public comment. Do we have any public comment cards for regular public comment? We have the public hearing, so I'll pull up from that. Next, we have the public hearing, the rezone and site design review for Lums Village. So script here, this is the time for a public hearing in the matter of site design review application, SDR dash 24 dash two and rezone application, RZ dash 24 dash two. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please fill out a blue colored comment card and submit to the city recorder. I will recognize you and ask if anyone else wishes to speak. This hearing is being recorded. Please speak clearly and once recognized, please step up to the lectern and make your comments. Please refrain from making your comments last longer than three minutes. Please restrict them to three minutes. And testimony, arguments and evidence in this hearing must be directed toward the applicable criteria or standards identified in the staff report, or to either criteria in the development code or comprehensive plan that you believe applies to the decision. The application before the city must be decided based on these criteria. And despite the importance of other issues that may be raised during the public hearing, the authority of the city is limited only to those issues that address compliance with the applicable criteria due to state land use law. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the land use board of appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. We will conduct this hearing as follows. We'll have the ethics disclosures, the presentation of the staff report, questions for staff, the presentation by the applicant, the commission questions, the applicant, public testimony, and then testimony of support, opposition and neutral, rebuttal by the applicant, close of the public testimony and the deliberation of the commission members with either a motion to approve with conditions denied or proven whole. Decision may be made at the, by the city commission to close the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If it is reset to a date certain in the future, this will only be the only notice of that date you shall receive. We shall now commence. Do any commissioners wish to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias or conflicts of interest? Please state to the record, no. All right. And the only thing I'll note is that I received correspondence, a question related to noticing from citizen Tony Falletti, which actually caused for this reset because we realized there was a notice issue that didn't comply with state law. So that's not really an ex parte, but I want to put it in the record just to make sure. Has any members visited the subject site? Who? Okay, Commissioner Sossio, Commissioner?
I kind of know the general area. I didn't go look.
Didn't go look?
I didn't go look.
I've looked, I haven't walked the premises, but I've seen it as I've driven across and right. And do you, is there any any conflicts within the members related to the site visit? You feel like you make a fair and impartial judgment? Let the record reflect, all said yes. Okay. City will now present the staff report. Mr. Fragonese? Did I pronounce that right?
You did.
Oh, yes.
Mayor, Commissioners? Thanks for having me tonight. I'm excited to be here. I actually have a presentation. It's not too long and I'm going to use a clicker and I'm going to do my best to make sure technology works tonight. As you mentioned, tonight, we're looking at a request for a rezone of property from R10, which is your middle or intermediate density residential to RH. I should, and then you are looking at a site designer review to construct new, new multifamily housing development. One thing I wanted to note about this was this was seen by planning commission, I think back in October, is that correct? Back in October, they went. So planning commission did the site design review, looked at the zone change request, sent it on to you for adoption. So they've been at this for several months now. City's been working with them closely on this request. Property is 380 alternative 101. Lot size is about 3.2 acres. I already mentioned this. It's designated R10 currently with the request to go to RH, which is the high density residential. In terms of surrounding land uses to the north and south and commercial use to the east, it's vacant and or institutional use to the west, which is the high school. Right now, there is a home on the site. The plans are obviously to demolish that home and replace it with the multifamily development. The property currently has utilities in terms of sewer and water and access to the street. There are development constraints on the site. There are mapped wetlands and the site, and it is within the 100 year floodplain. So there are two things to that we consider as part of this application. Hopefully you can see this, this is the site itself. I'm going to click down so I can see if I have any notes that I want to mention about it. But you can see the surrounding land that I mentioned. It is right on the river there and there is quite a bit of what's on floodplain, as I mentioned before. So this is the current zoning. That's the R10 zone that you can see. The interesting thing about this that I wanted to point out is that it's actually two different zones. So the subject site is R10 and A5 Aquatic Five, which is shoreline, I think shoreline aquatic. And so you'll see it's unique that it has split zoning. That's not very unique, but it happens occasionally. So the site is both R10 and A5 currently. Interestingly enough, the areas that are mostly wetland are in that aquatic zone. Yeah, A5 coastal lake and freshwater wetlands. So, so this is still zoom in. This is what is being proposed. So the subject types basically shows the area that's the A5 will remain that. And then that orange RH you see on the map, that will change from R10 to RH. So that's what the new zoning map would look like.
That's where the buildings will go?
That's where the buildings will go.
Where the house sits now?
Where the house is now, yes. And mostly due to wetlands, clearly. And this picture here just shows the wetlands. This is the local wetland inventory. So you can see that most of that area that is A5 is within the wetlands. I would even argue that the wetlands are probably more extensive than the data set shows. I think I've said this before, but a lot of the wetland data is not accurate. Thus, the necessity to do wetland delineations on many of these projects, which is going to come up in a minute when I talk about conditions of approval. Again, this is what floodplain. So again, most of the site or about half the site is it within the 100 year floodplain. The area proposed, proposed development is outside of the floodplain area and the area that was, is requested to be changed. I do want to point out that we did submit a land use notice to Department of State Lands to let them know that we are to do the wetland delineation if it's required. So the state tells us whether it's required or not. As a rule of thumb, I typically ask any applicant who has a portion of their area on their property in the flood zone, or sorry, not wet or wetland, not flood zone, wetland to then ask state lands to determine if we need a well and delineation or not. Typically, we do. Again, one of the conditions of approval is going to be doing that. I also wanted to mention that there are, there is ponding, there is a lot of moisture in these areas. And part of the requirement for this will be a stormwater master plan that'll be done to get the final permit. So we will consider the stormwater plan as part of the approval process. What next? So in terms of conditions of approval, I think this is, I've alluded to this a little bit, but we only have three, which is good. But I would like to, the applicant have to submit traffic study required by the warranted development code for zoning changes. That hasn't been done yet. So I'd like to make that a condition of approval for to that traffic study. And then beyond that, if there are mitigations that are identified as part of that traffic study, that they would be required to then do those mitigations. And then the third one relates to that DSL wetland requirements. So essentially, obtaining those approvals from DSL and or doing that wetland delineation will require it as a condition of approval as well. So those were my recommended conditions of approval. In terms of the applicant is thoroughly addressed a criteria for the rezone. All the information is submitted in the packet. Hopefully you've seen that staff report and findings and agenda. Just to, I just want to put this on the record that I was not the author of that staff report. It was a previous planner, but I've reviewed it thoroughly and understand it and agree with it. So staff recommends approval with the conditions that I mentioned previously for this application. And in terms of next steps, if after hearing this evidence at this hearing within the revised staff report and ordinance, the city commission agrees to sufficient facts existing to grant the rezone and site design review applications, they should move to approve with conditions. I also wanted to note that I did put a sample or an example motion in there. However, I think the date's wrong for the meeting. So if you do use it, make sure that we do correct the date in that recommended motion. Other than that, that's the end of my presentation and I will leave it up for any questions?
Any questions of staff? Will you do the staff report?
I have questions.
Sure.
Related to the traffic study. So that area is already like incredibly busy because of all the commerce over there. I don't even know if you can answer this, but like, what would a traffic study with, is it six, is 16 additional units?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Sixty.
Do we anticipate like
So sixteen, sorry, not six, sixteen. So they're basically, they're going to check for queuing at the nearest intersections. They'll check for right turn and left turn exits. They'll do a whole bunch of different things and they base it on the number of units and then how many trips are generated by those, by those units. So maybe a mitigation could be, I don't know if it's true, but the intersection, the closest intersection could be recommended to potentially have different sort of, it could be a recommendation for a stoplight. Now that's pretty extreme. I doubt that's going to happen, but that could be, if there was 120 units going in there?
Right.
Probably 16, probably not. So that would be extreme, but that could be a mitigation example.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
The only question I have is related to, so the there's two accesses noted, there's Dolphin and there's a business 101. Has ODOT already signed off on the 101 access?
I don't know that. We'd need to ask the
Well, the applicant will be up for that soon, so.
But yeah, if not, they would have to. So if that's, and if, that's a great question to ask the applicant, because that could potentially be another condition. And I don't even know if it needs to be
We don't control that road.
We don't control it anyway, so they're going to have to do it. So either way.
And that might affect how the access and then out of Dolphin goes.
Very true.
Because it's so close, so.
Yeah.
Okay. And then stormwater, a stormwater runoff plan?
Yeah.
I imagine that in general, that would probably just make it so that the stormwater goes right and skipping on?
Likely, yeah. So I mean, that's where most other stormwater goes to Jason. I think the key is that you don't, you know, when we do any plans like this, we're going to require the erosion plan, stormwater master plan, landscaping plan, all those things are part of the package that are required in the permitting process. So all those things will be reviewed by city staff in one way or another.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? All right. Thank you.
Sure, I'll be around.
But in terms of the, the date that you're suggesting?
Yeah.
It says January 28th. What was the date of that staff report? Second of January, okay. Oh, March 2nd. Thank you. All righty. Next, we'll have the, the applicant. Would you like to make a presentation? No, no, you're, you're the applicant. So you're, you're good to go. I mean, probably say your name and address.
My name is Ryan Helixo. My address is 38830 Northern McCoy Lane in Astoria. Welcome, everybody. Appreciate you hearing us this evening. Just kind of a quick bullet point on a few work items associated with the project. Number one, this is a local developer, private investment in our community, local job creation for area contractors and subcontractors, suppliers. The objective and goal here is to naturally help fill a portion of the housing gap at the local level, countywide, and certainly state level. Naturally, it's an existing facility that needs some work enhancement. And so we're looking to breathe new life into that existing property. Excuse me. The location strategically is good for walking access to area schools, public transit, shopping and employment opportunities. And its high density zoning request is consistent with the adjacent or semi-adjacent property to the Northwest. Not familiar if, or if everybody has reviewed the site plan sheet A0 identifies that the structure development is certainly in the upper 50% of the tax lot to the east. No work is taking place down in the low lying areas. The majority of the utilities and access are coming off of southeast Dolphin to the east. There is, as you look at the site plan, an existing entry off of the highway 104 spur that is going to be part of our traffic study, but is not intended for this particular construction phase. You'll see with the site plan that we've got all of the landscaping requirements setbacks that meet the warranty municipal code. Sidewalks on Dolphin will extend, or southeast Dolphin will extend clear to highway 104 and meet ODOT standards at the intersection with crosswalk and any ODOT requirements. We have all of our ADA accessibility, excuse me, ADA accessibility met, not only on the site, but in and around the structures themselves and egress on and off the site to the sidewalks. The site plan also has included the fire, fire hammerhead turn for fire department and refuse and recycling pickup for city waste. The, also additionally, the site design includes 29 parking spaces, two of which are ADA for compliance with the two ADA units. As you look to one of the other attachments in there will be sheet A2, it's the architectural elevations, exterior elevations. You'll see that we have the two structures planned. They're each two stories in height. The final count include 12 two bedroom units, two three bedroom units and two one bedroom units for combined 16 units total. The habitable space for the buildings are just under 17,000 square feet. So they average approximately 1,000 square feet per unit. Access to the second floors are all done via an inset exterior stairwell. So the stairwell doesn't propel off the side. The building is actually within the structure itself, but still exterior. Let's see here. Oh, the appearance of the building. So the architect has taken great measure to mix up materials. We've got cementous siding that will be both horizontal and vertical with some shingle appearance. All that will be painted earth tones. And we've got architectural composition roofing that sets atop a really a, I would say a cut up roof line. So we don't have just a clean symmetrical roof. It actually has good roof lines and appearances for a good aesthetic value. Let's see. Addition, one additional note in there that by code, there is fire suppression within all the buildings as well. So that's just a footnote here. Other than that, that kind of wraps up the overall summary of the building itself, site plan, and then just some of the miscellaneous features. Does anybody on the commission have any questions?
Did I read this correctly? You got 29 parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. And 18 units, right?
Correct. 16.
16, oh, okay. Well, that satisfies my other question because I was going to say, yeah, that worked right. Yeah, which is excellent. The hammerhead that you're referring to, I'm unfortunately, maybe it's my eyes, but when we blow this up on our screens, it does, it's not digital. So it's like a scanning version. So it gets a little blurry.
Sure.
Where is the hammerhead specifically? On I mean, I see, I see where you could conceivably make a hammerhead, but I don't.
Yeah. Okay, let's see that, the hammerhead profile in here.
Okay, that's the hammerhead. Okay, I see future curb cut. So I'm just thinking of that as an access, not as a hammerhead. Okay. Thank you. And is the with you know, you've mentioned that the phases. So this is just for phase one? Or is this all being built at once?
All built at once.
Okay, so one phase. And then you've got, is the existing building, and forgive me if I missed it somewhere, but the existing building that's on that lot, is it going to get dosed?
Yeah, it gets removed. In fact, physically, there's one of the buildings sits atop it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That one on the any other questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. We have, first off, we have written testimony. And Mr. Falletti, I'm assuming this is for the hearing, the written testimony. So let the record reflect, written testimony has been submitted and entered into the record on Mr. Tony Falletti. But there's also we have testimony in, is neutral. Okay. So first off, I'm going to ask, is there anyone wishing to speak in support of the application? But the record is like none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? But the record reflect none. And now we go into neutral. We have one public comment card, Mr. Falletti. And we have your record, you have your name and address on the record here. So go ahead and straight into your three minutes.
Thank you for your time. As a longtime resident slash property owner across this property, I have several concerns to bring to your attention. I want to make clear that I'm not opposed to the project. My first concern is about drainage for stormwater. If any changes in gradient are made along southeast Dolphin, along the side of the property facing alternate 101, caution needs to be taken not to direct the stormwater towards my property as I'm lower than the development property. My second concern is about the drainage from the buildings and the parking. From what I understand is going to drain into wetlands towards the Skipimahn River. I want to make you aware that this low land, low property floods when the river backs up at high tide during large storms. Where's their stormwater going to go when the area is flooded? Will their stormwater come over to my property and cause the issues? I wanted to make you aware of my concerns. And I've also attached the pictures that you guys have in your packet there that were taken on the 14th of December. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody else wishing to speak neutral? The record reflects only one public testimony. All right. Is the applicant has the opportunity to offer a rebuttal or closing statement?
Good evening, Arlen. Having sat on that side, I really appreciate the late evenings and the time you put in. Part of my public service the last four years as a county commissioner liaison for housing and other comprehensive plan. So I understand the need for housing. And this opportunity for us to help be a part of that solution is very exciting for us. And then selfishly, we look at it in terms of, we have our own employees who struggle with housing. And we're looking that we can, you know, have placement of our own employees right next door so they can solve budget problems with walking across the street and having a nice, comfortable, safe place to live. And we hope, you know, that we're helped contribute towards the solution in class of county instead of perpetuating a problem. So we appreciate that opportunity and all the time you put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I just have one quick question of the staff. If I may. Hearing no objection. All right. So you'd mentioned that there's a, just to the public comment, there is a stormwater master plan that has to be driven for this project.
There will be one provided as part of the permitting process, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, we are going to close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And the city commission deliberations will, so Commissioners?
I would think in making the force condition be the stormwater plant because you only had the three that were required. That's fine. That the stormwater plant is part of the condition.
Well, I just note, I believe that the stormwater plant is required by city code.
It is required and they, they look at all the impermeable surfaces and future runoff as well. So it is required. Yeah, already.
Anything else?
For the traffic study, are we allowed to waive that condition of approval? Or is it because it's code, it's required? I'm just asking because we are in urgent need of housing. And this is just to me, additional red tape for an area that is already very busy. So I don't, I don't see the need for this information that's going to tell us what we already know.
I mean, the question's been asked, Scott. I mean, the question's been asked, Scott. Mr. Pregnancy.
I guess I would say, I agree with you, it would be very nice to do that, the code does require it for this type of project.
Okay.
And there's not a variance request in front of us.
Okay, thank you.
I had the same concerns, oh, but I think as long as it goes and it says it meets all the standards, I'm fine with it.
Not only that, I feel like this property has probably drained into the skip and on, and they're not really gonna change the amount of rain that falls on the property.
I think it's just the impervious surface.
Okay, there is gonna be a little less.
I think. Having gone through the Chelsea Gardens master planning process and the debacle that was the traffic plan for Wendy's. And then, of course, the subsequent transportation systems plan update that ODOT forced us to take for Ensign. I don't suspect that that's the traffic plans gonna yield any noticeable requirements or changes. Maybe a turnout, but that's about as far as it'd go office for one oh four. Just because the the traffic density modules that were used got updated after all that occurred. And after the Chelsea Gardens master plan was implemented, ODOT required us to take those, so those. Traffic density requirements are much higher than they used to be, so I think. Well, it may be red tape, it is need to be done. I also think that there's a certain element of the population that would. Scream like a smashed cat and justifiedly so if we didn't at least look at the impacts of traffic on that specific highway, considering. A lot of the population has to go through that to get to the school now, and will increase that as the school master plan occurs, so.
Showing outlet onto spur one oh four behind the buildings.
It is currently an outlet there, but ODOT would require a new application to actually utilize that.
I see.
Alright, is there any other questions or deliberation? Okay, is there? Alright, we have before us, see here, we have the. Rezone ordinance, and then we have, there's two separate actions here before us. I think the ordinance, we have to use the rezone ordinance first, and then we'll move on to the site design, so. Is there a motion to conduct the first reading by title only of ordinance number twelve eighty six, an ordinance approving? With conditions, the site design review application SDR twenty four dash two. And the rezone application RZ twenty four dash two and amending the city of warrants and zoning map to reclassify the zoning of a portion of real property identified as tax lot. Eight one oh two eight eighty zero three four zero zero from our ten intermediate density residential to RH high density residential.
Second.
Moving to second aid. Dire Poe to conduct the first reading by title only of ordinance number twelve eighty six. An ordinance approving with conditions, the site design review application SDR dash twenty four dash two and the rezone application RZ twenty four dash two. And amending the city warrants and zoning map to reclassify the zoning of a portion of real property identified as tax lot eight one oh two eight eighty zero three four zero zero. From our ten intermediate density residential to RH high density residential. All those in favor, CI? All's opposed. Motion carries, orders for twelve ninety six, an ordinance approving with conditions, the site design review application SDR twenty four dash two. And the rezone application RZ twenty four dash two and amending the city warrants and zoning map to reclassify the zoning. Of a portion of real property identifies tax lot eight one oh two eight eighty zero three four zero zero from our ten intermediate density residential to RH high density residential. Alright, and then the next portion. Is that, is that it? It was combined, we don't, we don't separate the zone and the site design? Okay, alright. Good, good enough for me, there we go. Alright, well, that connects the first reading, and we'll be at the next reading, March twenty fifth, so. Alright, thank you. We'll move on to item seven A. Congratulations on the first reading. Resolution for twenty seven hundred annual mortgage rates and adoption. Harbor Master.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission for having me here, Jessica McDonald, Harbor Master. I'm here tonight for the second reading of resolution, resolution number two seven zero zero. This is based on our previous discussions in the first reading, increasing annual mortgage rates, three dollars per foot for the next two years. And also clarifying some language to make billing a little bit easier in our office and fix some grammatical errors in the resolution.
Alright, so any questions of staff, the resolution? Okay, is there a motion to connect the second now, and resolutions, we don't, we usually adopt those, but we're doing a first and second reading because it's rates. So is there an adoption at the end of this, or do we just read the second reading and call it a day?
I don't really think we technically need to have a second reading, we just bring it forward twice to allow the public an opportunity. Because it is a rate increase, yes.
But do we need to be doing an adoption at the end of this?
Yes, yes.
I just noticed there wasn't adoption, so.
Yes.
Alright, thank you for the parliamentary inquiry. Is there a motion to conduct the second reading by title of resolution for twenty seven hundred?
So moved.
Second.
Moving in second, it's Lazio Dyer to connect the second reading by title only of resolution number twenty seven hundred. All those in favor, CI? All's opposed. Motion carries, resolution for twenty seven hundred, a resolution updating annual. Amending Marina rates and fees and repealing resolution number twenty six forty five. Alright, thank you. Next, we have the city water policy, ordinance number twelve ninety two.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, we need to have the adopt.
Thank you, I just asked that and I moved on right that. You got me. Alright, is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twelve, twenty? Twenty seven hundred. Moving in second, post Lazio to adopts resolution for twenty seven hundred. All those in favor, CI? All's opposed. Motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Thanks for keeping us honest. City water policy, ordinance number twelve ninety two.
Mayor and city commission, so at a previous meeting, this was a discussion item. There was a discussion regarding, we kind of called it a cap, but it's not really cap, it's a. Water policy update, if you will, so this is regarding some. Travel troubled ones that we had struggled with in the past on what to do, and so we have suggested some wording. The first change starts on page eight of the ordinance, and then on page nine is the probably the most significant. Your finance executive and I have been taking lead on this, but I did wanna let you know. Our new public works director is here as well, Kevin Gorman, and so I did wanna take an opportunity to introduce him, he's back there sitting by chief. Workman, so if you have any questions from public works or finance or my side, we're all here to answer your questions. You will note page eight, we just wanted to update to instead of five PM, eleven fifty nine PM, because that gives people who pay online. More opportunity to pay, and we think that's to their benefit, but then on page nine, if you will. We did have a slight correction to what we put in there. The public works director had make a recommendation, instead of in the last sentence of the highlighted section. We would like to say instead of leave the meter in the ground to monitor for leaks, the water service instead of meter would be, we would like to substitute. So that would be an amendment to this, so that highlighted is a change, and then we also had a change up above. Of about. Excuse me, where's the section I'm looking for the, it's actually on page twelve, I'm sorry, so that is. Referring to if someone has passed away and they are the sole owner of a property. What we do in that, in that situation as well, but we are open to your amendments to those. But that is the proposed wording as recommended by staff, and if you have any questions of us.
Okay.
Basically, we don't hear anything, we pull the meter twelve months unless it's a real cost. Problem to do that, cutting up road, blah, 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 we're gonna leave the meter in and we're gonna still cap it twelve months and just check.
Yeah, and public works was recently able to give some estimates, and Kevin may be able to talk a little more to that, but. I don't think sometimes folks are aware, it can cost something like twenty five hundred dollars for this removal, so it's not an, like, when they don't pay. And, you know, they stop payment, and then they, we pull that, it actually is a cost back to them as well, so it's not a cheap. Thing either, sometimes the twenty five hundred is the more costly side, that's not necessarily your standard removal.
But what this is saying is if someone's died, we can't get a hold of them, and we can't talk to anybody who's in charge of the property, then. It is too costly to pull the meter, we just leave it, we cap it twelve months and check for leaks, is that what that paragraph?
So you have two different things going on, the first one, page nine, it doesn't really talk about someone who's deceased, this is simply. With our regular process, if someone stops payment. If somebody stops payment, we don't know if they're, you know, what's the situation, we're not investigating that. We're just saying simply at twelve months, this is our usual policy, but on page twelve, we had an extended conversation at the last. At a prior meeting, regardless, if somebody passes away, well, there is an expectation there, most likely, you know, if it goes into. Probate or something like that, you know, the assumption is it may change hands sooner than that as well. But if somebody brings forward a death certificate, you know, we can show then a reason for why the services may be.
Okay, I see.
Section two, paragraph six on applications, property ownership responsibility, the property owner of record shall be ultimately responsible for the payment of all charges. Described in the ordinance, if the person's responsible fails to pay the charges, should he sell, the city shall submit the bill to the property owner. I kind of feel like there needs to be a little bit more specificity on that, personally, I think. That the city shall inform the property owner of record, make it clear to that, because and there's certain ends, but we're not gonna know if there's a contract purchase, so to speak. So I think if they're, the property owner of record, which is defined with the county records. That once the bill goes beyond three months, unless the county, we that we shall notify them of that regardless. But if, I think the exemption would be unless they count owner and property owner are the same, then we don't have to, because they're getting the notice anyway. But I'm just trying to think of instances that we've seen come across our desk on this issue that's been kind of bubbling for a while. That property owners should probably be notified if their tenant or whoever that is operating their property, if the account is under a different name. And that's gone for three months, delinquent, they should probably be aware of that before we start, you know, moving towards, or maybe make that six months. But I'm just thinking, it seems kind of weird to let things just rack up for a whole year worth of water charges before we. You know, say, hey, by the way.
And I don't know if our finance department wants to talk a little bit more about that. I'm, I'm a little confused by terminology you were using, because we usually go with whoever is listed in the counties.
Interrupt you there, it's the property owner's responsibility to sign up for service with the city, so if we do not know who the property owner is, we're not scouting them out. At a certain point, we may check county records, but that is not our standard policy, we, and we also don't have an agreement with the property owner. If they've never signed up for service with us.
So, let me put it this way, okay, so somebody shows up, sets them an account, right, they're not the property owner, they're just having an account. They get one month of service, sign up and all that, and then they skip town. For whatever reason, you know, I know we've had people, you know, wife for murder, that's been out there, we've got people that. Have died, and, and there's been all sorts of things where we don't necessarily let the owner know that, hey, by the way, these bills are racking up on your property.
If we know who the owner is, we will, and we won't let a tenant sign up knowing that they're not the owner if we don't know who the owner is. But if we have an owner of record and the ownership changes and nobody tells us, then we don't know.
But we're automatically putting liens on people's properties, but we're not willing to. Let them know that, hey, by the way, that, you know, your property's accruing. Civil forfeitures.
Yeah, I mean, I think that there's always been an expectation that the property owner should be responsible as well, and they should notify us that they are an owner. And then we are, we do send reminder letters out to property owners.
But you're saying that we won't sign up any, oh, you're saying that if they've already signed up for an account, but ownership changes, it's responsible for that person to then.
Yes, I will say that that doesn't happen very often, because in most cases, it goes through an escrow company, and we're made aware through escrow, and then we can kind of. Foresee that this is happening, and we can say, hey, I, I think property ownership changed, do you have contact? But if we don't, if we're not notified in any way, shape or form. We're not. Investigating county records, which also takes some time to update, so we might check it one day, and then a month later, it's updated, but we wouldn't know to keep checking back.
Okay.
So it leaves a little bit less, I mean, I hear what you're saying, and I, I do agree, and we do eventually check county records multiple times, and then my. May try to reach out to someone at that point, but I would be a little hesitant to put it in the ordinance, just because it leaves a lot of unknowns.
I do think that if we're gonna go shut off the property meter, the owner needs to absolutely be, it should be a city shall. Notice by mail or however we wanna do that.
So are you talking about the twelve month? I believe we would, we should, I agree, check county records before we disconnect water service.
Yeah, I, I, because when we do that, now we're basically changing a value of the property, because now there's no longer. And allowed use there, because now you're gonna.
And we do send a letter about a forced disconnect, and I'm almost positive, we check county records when we do that.
And how much timeframe between when that letter gets sent and the timeline for when we pull?
I can't remember if it's thirty or ninety days, I can get back to you on that, but. Like a month or three months.
I got a question, do, if a person rents a house and they're not the owner, are they required to give the owner's information?
No, we require that the owner give us that information.
So when you rent a house, you go to the city and say, hey, here's my information.
A renter is usually not the one that's setting this up, the owner is saying, I authorize this, the owner, it is the owner who has that responsibility.
So that's.
And that's pretty standard across most cities.
And for the most part, we actually make them physically come into city hall to sign up, so we can go over all this information with them, occasionally, people live out of state. You know, not gonna make them come in, but then we go over it on the phone and we mail them a card, still go through our same protocols.
I was lucky because our renters at my mom's house, they were late a couple times. And I walked down here and they, oh, they're late, I give them a call, it's paid that day, and it worked out okay.
I just think that the notice requirement should be in the ordinance, so to speak, because I think people have a right to have that notice in writing, so it's not just, well. We screwed up, sorry, we didn't notice you on time, whatever, there's gotta be a give and take in the right here, I think it might be, you know, they're signing up for something. It's an automatic lien if they don't pay, so there was kind of a heavy hand in that sense, I think there should be some sort of. For lack of a better term, customer rate. To have a sufficient notice of punitive action.
And you're talking about the forced disconnection.
Yeah, forced disconnection.
How many times, though, do we give them notice in their initial lack of payment? So they've stopped paying.
So if someone's past due, they get their next bill that says they're past due, they get their reminder letter that says they're past due, they get a door hanger, and then we disconnect the service.
I'm not talking about. I'm talking about meter pole.
Oh. Then they'd get a collection letter after that, notifying them. And they continue getting bills that say they're past due, but then they only get the one notice about the meter pole.
Yeah.
With the thirty to or ninety day window.
I think, and I think with the letter that we send out, it should be disclosed that if we pull your meter. Then to reconnect is going to be as if it's a new connection.
Yeah.
But I guess my, my thing is I, I like the laws, and I think that that statement should be somewhere in the law.
The statement about the letter going out.
That, that the implications of the removal of a twelve month mark.
I agree, it could be made more clear, it is in there, but you have to like, kind of. Look at this definition and then apply it to this sentence, and so we can.
It just had a section that says, if, you know, for. You know, twelve months disconnect from the whatever, you know, we may leave it fail, fallow, and if we leave it fallow in the ocean, we're pulling the meters, so to speak. Then we're still gonna treat it the same way as if we do, if we do pull it, you know what I mean, right, I imagine.
Well, and that is one of the questions, because if we do not pull the meter, it is still there, and so. That, that is a concern, because there are other people, when you pull it, they have more charges. When that is reinstated versus someone where it's.
Not a hundred percent sure we can treat them the same based on the SDC code.
Because it is about existing versus not, no longer there.
So in my, and so if you, maybe then I, I would say this, in my opinion, because this doesn't happen at all, so we're not losing tons if we go on the short. Remove the SDC aspect of it, and just say that unless the use is discontinued, so to speak, so. If it gets disconnected, they sell it, six months later down the road, that use is discontinued, whatever. Then, yeah, you gotta go for a full new SDCs, whatever, but if, in the case of, or, in that case, or what you do is you say, hey. If the, we're pulling the meter, but we're gonna actually leave the line, because that's a problem for us or you, whatever. Then. If they're gonna build another house there, and it's another single family home, then it's the same use, there's no SDC, but that should be the same for if we pull it or if we don't.
And so that would be an update, then also on your SDC fee code, because currently you say if it's no longer there. You have the new SDC, if it is there, you get.
I believe the water and sewer SDCs are based on connections.
Yes.
So if we remove the connection, then they repay it.
The connection's left and the meters pulled.
Right, yes, and then that's, I guess, our.
Because I just feel like that, that makes it so that we have different classes of citizens and property rights based on just sole. Luck of the draw in the sense of where you're located based at infrastructure.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yes, I think I'm maybe still a little bit confused on how it applies the same to someone whose meter is physically. The connection is physically removed, whereas someone else's who's. Meter is just pulled.
Yeah, so let me put it this way, if. The policy is basically twelve months, you're done, we pull the service, right? That could be the meter, whatever, right, but we're pulling it so that it becomes a reset. That could be the meter, whatever, right, but we're pulling it so that it becomes a reset of the property, so to speak, right? Now, we've had a case in the city in both ways. In one case, property owner, it was not convenient for us because we knew we weren't going to recover the cost. To pull the service all the way to the main for city policy, so we left it and there's still a meter there and it's racking up charges even though there's nothing there that's actually using it. Then there's another property, maybe just, let's pretend it's just down the road, same road, same situation, same placement. Except for its meters a little bit further off and the service teed off right somewhere, maybe it's on Heron, right? More convenient to pull off to the main, so we pull them, they had the same issue, we pull it to the main. You've got two people who did the same thing, which is they didn't pay their, their water bill for a whole month or a whole year. And so city policy says your service is disconnected, you know, permanently in that sense. They should be treated the same for when it comes to reconnection. It shouldn't be different just because it happens to be that the infrastructure is difficult, you know what I mean, it just doesn't seem like fair play.
No, I understand and I think I agree with you. I think my concern is if we're removing, if we're leaving the service there, I don't know if we can charge the SDC again, is all.
It's. And I'm saying get rid of the SDC.
Right, but you would have to update that code as well then.
You're making it sound like we can't do that.
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying you can, but I'm saying it's an additional layer, just so you're aware.
Yeah, 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 no, I mean, but I, but I think, I think it's important for fairness.
I should, I think it should be a fair playing field.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with you.
What I hear you saying is that regardless if the meter was pulled or not pulled after a year, you reset on your fees.
Well, I know, I think if, I think we were just going to pull the SDC off of the reconnection. If it's done in a year's time or whatever, so to speak, that we're just totally eliminate the SDC connection for a property to a certain period of time, I don't know if it needs to be indefinite. Yeah. But I think it should be some sort of, you know, I think change of use is six months, isn't it?
Yeah, but I think you're right in terms of the, if the structure's still there, you can't recharge the SDC.
Right, because it's not a new use, yeah, even though it's a new connection.
We're not saying within existing structure, it's a change of use, we're saying if there's no structure there, but it's in the ground. And they pull it, but, but they don't pull it and leave it and then they build. If, if it was, if it's laying there, our current thing says if it's there, we don't charge the SDC unless it's an upgrade to the size.
But I think under this new policy. We're allowing it so that if it's, there's no house there, then basically they can discontinue service without having it to be racked up, correct, if I read that.
Yeah, so if the house, if the house isn't there, you can petition to have your meter pulled anyway, so that's different, I would say.
So are you suggesting that, so if I hear you right, you're saying that you would still eliminate the SDC for the connection, so to speak? And you just have a connection fee like we currently have, just up that up?
Yeah, I was saying you have to repay.
And that makes sense to me, I don't know if, you give me a look.
No, I. I don't really have a preference, I just want to understand what the, where, where we want to go.
Yeah, I mean, here's my thing, it's just, I, you know, SDC is supposed to capture new growth, they're supposed to. I don't like the way our SDCs are formulated when it comes to single family homes, it's like, oh, you added a bathroom, like all of a sudden your, your same sized family is going to be, you know, doing X, Y, Z, but. Hey, we can stock 16 people in a, you know, one bathroom, three bedroom house, you know, it happens, right, so I, I don't think it. I'm, that's another story for another time, but. But I do think that, that there's probably something to be said about making it simpler when it comes to the disconnect aspect.
I, I don't disagree, so, so just, but just so I understand you clearly, so you're saying. If it's an empty lot and we leave the, the water service there and they go to rebuild. And say it was a, you know, single family home, but now it's a duplex, but.
That's a different story, that's a change of use.
It is a change of use, but so you're saying, but we don't charge any SDCs because it's existing, correct? Or we cha, we charge only for this, the one side of the duplex? I'm, I'm just trying to think through.
I'm actually thinking that it's just easier just to get rid of SDC questions for single family development on that stack altogether and just go to a higher reconnection.
For that particular instance, when it's been, damn bill went down and.
Yeah.
In this scenario, does it matter if the house is still there or not? I don't know that it does.
No. I mean, I don't know if anyone thinks different, I mean.
Higher connection after a year.
I guess, I guess I'm tying it to that because a lot of these come down to the, the house has gone. A lot of these ones we're pulling, it's because there's no longer a house.
Always with the forced disconnection, but that does.
It seems to be like it's burned, burned down.
The Harvard property, that house has been gone forever, so it's a new use when you build it, I mean, it's been gone for like 14 years or whatever, so. But if, if that gets raised to the ground, so to speak, let's just pretend like the, the one we just decided, alum application, right, there's a house already there. So. Say it gets dosed, right? Project gets canceled because, you know, World War III happens or, you know, loan rates go crazy, whatever, right? Project gets canceled, someone decides to rebuild single family home. Like, we're going to call that new, new impact? You know, it's not, it's the same use and they do it within a year. If you let it sit fallow for longer than a year, I think that's obviously additional impact, but I think if you're rebuilding on the same footprint. Maybe I'm making it more complicated, I'm not, I'm just thinking, it doesn't seem fair to say just because of circumstance, again, city staff says, hey, this is too expensive. So at our convenience, we're going to leave it, you don't have to pay SDCs. Because there's some other special rule, but hey, we pulled your, we pulled your entire service per code because that was convenient, but now you have to pay SDCs. Just rubs me the wrong way. It doesn't seem fair. I don't know, commissioners?
You should be fair.
I think we should have a meeting on it just to discuss it. I don't think we're going to answer it tonight.
Okay, I, I just, but yeah, I just don't think it's fair. The other thing is, on section three, paragraph one, installation. New service may be installed upon improved water availability and payment of current water connection fee, any additional costs for labor, materials and system development charges are set by resolution. So what is our fully burdened rate? I asked that last question, that question last meeting, I'm just curious, what is our fully burdened labor rate?
It depends on the employee, so when we bill time, we bill actual time and so it, it depends.
So are you asking about our utility worker one or two, are you asking about a foreman?
It really depends, does that employee have full medical, do they?
On the constituents, right?
Yep.
They don't know who's a utility one, two, foreman, X, Y, Z. So city comes up and would say they do a project. Because people are available, we had the foreman and the highest senior people doing the work, maybe we're shorthanded, the public works directors out, right? And then Joe Schmo, you know, down the road, six months later, same story, same, same materials needed. And so we're going to bill for highest rate over here, but that guy's connection fee is less. I get that that's actual cost to the city, but I'm just trying to think like most businesses would have a fully burdened labor rate, like that is just the rate. And then if we do labor, that's the cost for that labor, you know, so to speak.
Just like a mechanic.
I know that GAZB requires some fancy accounting standards related to that, but.
We don't capitalize labor at this point, so we're.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we don't, we don't capitalize labor, so you're asking for like the private going rate.
At one point in time, we did an average rate, but that, we went away from that and I couldn't tell you why, it was directed by public works at the time.
Because here's my thing is when we talk about, okay, if staff is going to do that and that the city's going to bill you for the actual cost, if you're a developer. Or if you're just a single family homeowner, particularly the single family guy. You, having that cost ahead of time is going to be helpful.
They do provide an estimate.
Yeah, but that estimate is again, estimated, so unless, is that, is that based on the labor rates estimated and that's the charge that goes forward? Or is they go and look at it and say, hey, the public works director showed up, so that's going to be double the rate?
I don't see it changed drastically from the estimates to the actual invoice, so.
It's pretty accurate.
They, they do estimate it based, and it's usually utility workers out there, I don't think they would do it on a day that the public works director would have to go out there.
Between one, two, foreman, all that kind of stuff, so I just, I just think. The transparency aspect is kind of difficult and that's been something that the commission's talked about, that is kind of nebulous to the public is, hey, what is that cost, so? And section three, two. And I'm just thinking about a past lawsuit that we've had on this, so it said, water availability statements. It says on the last, end of the paragraph there. Refunded in full and the water availability statement will be void if not installed after 12 months, right? I do think that there needs to be some sort of statement when we make water availability statements. That has some sort of legal waiver that if we give you that availability statement, it goes void, you're waiving the right to sue us. Because that's what happened with the Dunes Development, is we got sued over water availability, which is the reason why I think phase two went forward. When we actually kind of stretched our water a little bit, doing phase two, so. I'm just thinking about that aspect of that.
Now, this is in town though, because you currently have a moratorium on outside the city limits, are you, are you?
We gave them past the moratorium that because they threatened to sue.
That is, that is correct, but as far as current practice, because we have told them no more.
No, I get it, but I'm just saying that it gives a stronger footing.
Almost positive on the water availability statement that it, it says on there that their water, exactly what the ordinance says and they are signing it. We can confirm that, that's a public.
But it was a loophole that they exercised and the legal was like.
I don't know that it was on it originally or many years ago, I kind of remember chatter about it and, and adding it, but we can double check that.
I just.
That would satisfy what you're talking about there.
Yeah. Section four, one. So availability meters, it only mentions the street or public right of way, what about public, what about private drives, like vacated roads? Because it says in that one, meters shall be located 12 inches inside the public street right of way.
Maintenance, section four, one.
Accessibility of meters on the maintenance section. And then if they do so, shall result in a letter of warning and may result in an in-water service disconnection. So how do we treat people who, because the street was vacated, now all of a sudden their water stopped, how do we get ourselves to follow our own policies?
Esther, do you have any comment on that? That is outside of my area and Kevin is reading this for probably the first time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, mayor, you talked very fast, can you give me the example again? I apologize, we just sat through one meeting and.
Right away, when you vacate your street, the water sewer.
Well, so what happens is, like, I, I'm thinking of a couple of spots, one was in Hammond, one's in the Philville district. Where a street got vacated, the lines were put in, keep in mind, the lines aren't where they're mapped. Which is very common in the city warranted.
Right, in Hammond especially.
That's not by the property owner's fault.
No.
In many cases, a private developer put it in, city accepted it, never checked.
Right.
Under this, if somebody decided they wanted to be hard nosed about it, they could say, well, you need to move your water service, your water meter. And if not, we're going to disconnect it, and I'm just trying to make sure that.
So you're saying it's in the vacated street.
With a vacated street, so now the property lines move.
Right, I think there is.
The only thing that's left is an easement for transversing the right of way.
I think though, some of that you have to look at grandfathered in and, and that's not just our city, I know for example, Seaside, so every time a street vacation occurs. We don't have everybody move their water line or water.
No, I get that.
So I don't think you could say with this, that challenge is, I mean. I haven't heard this come up recently, quite honestly, I hear a lot more about easements, but as far as a vacated street, well, now the boundary line has moved. Do we capture every single utility then and move it elsewhere? Not necessarily.
True, what I'm just trying to say is that, what I don't like is a law. That gets something where somebody could potentially be harmed by that, or at least by a simple reading of it. Without specificity enough to show that we are acknowledging instances where this may not be. I mean, for me, if this was a new development, yeah, stick it to them, right, they didn't do it right, but.
Right.
This is something somebody, you know, some senior citizen decided to move the warranty to retire and. And live in peace and then here's comes and there's some big water break or whatever, some new stuff happens, not sure what's going on and all of a sudden here it is. What does that mean for when they redo that line?
So, so where I read this, you know, it says, well, if it's inaccessible, that's an issue, but you know, usually it's a, okay. If the property owner is like, I, I wasn't aware, well, we should work with them then, it's not a matter of penalty if it's, well, the boundary line has moved, but that said, if a property owner is deliberately obscuring it, that is a, we should have recourse.
My question is, if the city accepted the water line the way it was. And then the city has to go and redo that because let's say, even though the map says it's straight, now it's dog legs, right, this has happened before. And then they've got to move all that stuff, now that's the city's water line, right, so it's not the homeowner's fault that that's the way it is. Now they come to redo it, now is the city, is now is the property owner responsible for movement of that water meter and that water line and that water service, simply because the city decided it needed to redo its own failure?
I, I guess I'm, I'm hearing two different things, so you're saying there was an issue with the water line as it was on the, their property. But then you're saying also the issue is because it's in a vacated street.
Well.
And the boundary has moved, there, there's probably some recourse on both sides.
I'm not saying, I'm saying like, say, it's an already vacated roof.
Right.
So it's been there forever, right? But now the city's going to have to redo that line, it doesn't realize that when it accepted that water line, that water line is not where it was supposed to be. So now they come up and they redo it, right? Now, frankly, that's on the city for not inspecting that water line when they accepted it. So now is it the property owner's responsibility to pay in part of that mistake fix or is it the city's responsibility?
If there's an adjustment to the lot after that was installed, I would assume that's the city's responsibility. Because you're looking at grandfathered lines that have to be moved to the property line now as we redo them, that's not the property owner's fault. Yeah. Yeah. I, I will be honest too, your new public works director has said he would like to review and, and make some recommendations down the road as well, but that, that said, that's not an immediate. You know, we have to give him some chance to get in and, and get his sea legs first.
I've got two pages of notes for you, this was a business item that staff put on the agenda, so next time if we want to have discussion on it, I would suggest that we be ready for the discussion.
Thank you, mayor.
That's not on you, sir, so.
So would you like this to come back as more of a discussion item, would you like to set up a work session on this, what, what is the desire of the commission?
I'll cease my questioning so we can move on, but.
I, I think there's a lot going on here, it's the first time I've seen, we've talked about a lot of topics. And I'm still hanging on like the first one.
So.
I'm just going down the items in this.
I think we can discuss it more.
So you have, you have two different things before, you have one where you had a discussion item on. Two different items that you wanted updated immediately, which you could put those in and, and then come back and revisit the entirety. Or you could say, well, we don't want to move on those yet, but keep in mind, you do have a couple, I think it's three properties that are still in the same situation. That you may want to update this to address those three now. So that is up to you all, it is up to your decision, but you could either, you know.
You have a, we do have a business item added on item eight, yeah, 7D, that's moved to after 8A. On a specific one of those three, and I don't, I think the commission has the authority to make that waiver on its own. It's staff that can't leave the policy, correct?
That's, I think, one of four, so that's a different one, I believe, yep.
So, all right, the commission wants to move it to a discussion item for next.
Well, I have a question, what would be the best way to share all of our feedback with staff so that certain things can be addressed, like. Yeah, I just have a couple of questions.
Um, that would be a work session and, and because it sounds like you're really digging into the entirety of the ordinance, that would be definitely also giving your public works director a chance to talk with staff and then come back ready to discuss. So I would suggest not doing that immediately, but scheduling that down the road because he needs the time also to dig into what he was hoping to do as some recommendations as well.
So this item should have been pulled from the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. If he had, item C1.
Well, he had mentioned doing it down the road in like six months, not immediately. But if you are wanting to pull this apart further, we can revisit for sure.
I think anything you bring before us is fair game, so.
So are there two items you think that need to be dealt with tonight?
Well, you had the, you had the request in the discussion to update regarding people who pass away and what's done with those type of homes, so if you leave it as is currently, we do not address those unless they bring those individually to the commission for request. We don't currently have that in policy, in, in the ordinance, and then the other one was regarding the immediate, or I'm sorry, after the 12 months. Pulling the meter, that was at page nine, we don't currently have that language, so the mayor has mentioned one of those houses, but I believe there's at least four others. That should be addressed and again, three or four others and again, I mean, they could come to you on an individual basis, but they may or may not.
I think two have, haven't they?
No.
Oh, these are different than that.
Yeah, yeah, since this has come up, I think at least two of these have, have been resolved, one is before you. There were a total of six or seven.
I'd like to do the work before we make the decision, so postpone until. You'd need, how much time would you need to kind of get your questions in order?
It's a good question, man, yeah.
How many dates have you been on, on the clock, Kevin, do you want to give them an update?
I'd say safely six months, but it, it was something that I wanted to look into in the next three months. The way I see it is, it's, in first. The way I see it is, it's uh in first, good evening, uh mayor, commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here. It it's something that I've had a lot of questions and I see a lot of uh language that needs to be cleaned up. So it's something I want to deep dive into deeper. Maybe even approach how we do disconnections a different way. Um some cities, instead of, you know, charging time and materials, they 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 do a standard shut off year, disconnection fee. Um so I'd like to dig into it probably three months at the minimum.
And maybe during the work session, we could have the the six scenarios that have caused us problems to work through like what the pain points were. So that we can really make sure that those are solved for.
Um are you referring to the work session coming up or are you in in nearing the scope to that?
Are we doing a work session on this at some point?
I think we need to work session on this.
Um so Commissioner Dyer wants a work session on the general policy now. And Commissioner Poe, you wanted a work session on the general policy?
I just think we need a little more time for our public works director and for myself to just look at. I just looked at this tonight and. I would, I would like a little more time to look it over. Or we're just discussing it first time and I thought this was a, you know, I mean, we could do the first reading and come back to it, but.
What were you suggesting then?
I was suggesting that if we had a work session, that we should come with our questions, but also have the six scenarios that have plagued us. So that we can map those pain points and make sure that we are resolving for those issues that were presented and. Just to have the most productive conversation possible, right? That was my only suggestion.
And committee, city manager, um. My apologies, I thought that this was uh, you know, staff had basically taken this, made some revisions. I was not under the understanding that this was going to be a temporary policy. I was understanding this was going to be the update to the permanent policy, which is why I. Dug deep into.
So uh you're you're not wrong, Mayor. Um what, from the discussion, there were only the. These, these significant issues that we were addressing. But that said, after that, the new public works director came on board and said he would like to further review down the road, you know, in six months' time. Which is why I didn't mention it to you all, because we had kind of our action items, if you will, to update now. Um I didn't expect all of you to pull the whole thing apart, quite honestly, because in that discussion, we were really focused on those. Those six specific ones, which they are, it really boils down to the house either falling down or or burning down. Um the property owner becoming deceased. Um those were really the critical areas that we were trying to address with this update. But it does sound like you would like to go into this deeper um and do some significant review, but that said. To give staff the time as well, it's, it is interesting because you have the commission that would like to update code. And make sure, but you also have your staff that want to take the time to really dig into what is working and what isn't on the ground level. Um so I'd like to marry those two, if you will, probably in a session, and that's probably at least three months out, unfortunately, then.
So you're saying that what we should do is your recommendation and the purpose of what has been presented to us, not a full code.
This was not a full code revision.
Fix in so that we can move on to the next three.
Yes, that is correct, or six months, whatever it takes for us to get back to.
So the commission want to keep as is? And move this order, they want to move everything to the work session?
Work session be quite a few. Can we? Do the two that we were trying to fix tonight and then we can revise or do whatever else, but those two seem to be. You know, I don't think they need to wait another three months.
And and just keep in mind, there was that slight amendment from meter to water services on that one line, so that would be the only suggested amendment to what was submitted. That was the first paragraph that was highlighted. When it talked about removal of services, we wanted to say instead of removal of meter, we wanted to say removal of water services.
Services instead of water meters?
It says meter. And we'd like to replace that with water service.
You're saying first line, I'm just trying to find.
Oh, I'm sorry, not first line, on page nine, the highlighted paragraph. The highlighted paragraph in the last sentence.
Okay, gotcha, okay. So is the commission wish to move forward with this policy as a temporary fix? I don't think it actually resolves the requests that have been made by those property owners, but I think it resolves the policy aspect of that, correct?
Moving forward, yes.
Be agreeable for that.
Okay, so um let's first off deal with the amendment uh now that we've got that clarified. So um is there a motion to amend ordinance number twelve ninety-two on page nine? That at the last sentence may choose to leave the service in the ground?
Kevin, I believe you wanted to say water service?
Yeah, water service.
So so if we go that in extreme circumstances, as such as removal costs are excessive and removal of services requires cutting into road services or disrupt other utilities. Public works with approval of city manager may choose to leave the water service. In the ground to monitor for leaks, what billing will cease, correct? So is there a motion to change under section five? Subsection one, paragraph J, in the last sentence. That uh may choose to leave the meter in the ground shall be changed to may choose to leave the water service in the ground. Move a second at Dyer Poe to amend the. Men ordinance number twelve ninety-two on section. Section five, subparagraph one, paragraph J. To read from may choose to leave the meter in the ground to they choose to leave the water service in the ground. All those in favor say aye? All to oppose. Motion carries, the ordinance is amended. Um is there? A motion to conduct the first reading by title only of amended ordinance number twelve ninety-two? There's a movement, is there, was it going to say? Yeah, I'm gonna go with uh Dyer Poe for um moves and seconded. Um to conduct the first reading by title only of ordinance number twelve ninety-two is amended. All those in favor say aye? All to oppose. Motion carries, ordinance number twelve ninety-two. Uh providing for rules and regulations for city of Warrenton Water Department in all areas served by the municipal water department outside Warrenton city limits. Requiring installation of water meters, repealing any other water ordinances or resolutions or parse thereof in what conflict here with. Providing a penalty for violation of any terms and conditions herein. All right, uh and then, you know, we'll see you in three months on that.
It was a pleasure, thank you.
We'll be much less confused and uh, you know, much. Consideration city goals, item seven C twenty-five twenty-seven, so um the commission held the street and developed some. A set of goals. Uh there's some kind of primary goals and there's some sub-sub goals. So um the major goals, draft goals for the two-year work plan is uh. The Warrenton Customer Experience Initiative, which is um to launch a task force essentially. And review all of our processes related to how it relates to constituents, interactions with the city. To view it from a customer experience lens and to see what we can do to um remove pain points and improve the system. For both staff and constituent alike. Is that uh an accurate description, commissioners?
I would say yes, but I would like to see the um the goal title updated. So it's more descriptive of what we're trying to achieve with regard to the customer experience.
So what would that be?
I would say something like um develop a high-level customer experience or like something around the a verb. That tells us what customer experience, what does that mean?
Gotcha. Um okay, uh so you would like to change the goals statement to develop uh.
I can all.
Or would you prefer like customer experience initiative or I mean what?
Yeah, so I guess it's two things. It's like, are we trying to like cultivate an internal culture? Are we revising policies and procedures to enhance the current customer experience or elevate the customer experience? You know, like, for me, when I see the current goals, I think I just struggle because I'm like. For example, um I think one of it's like increased transparency with the community, but like, what does that actually mean? Like, are we going to be hosting like town halls or? You know, newsletters and so to provide the community with more insight into what our goals actually are, I want to just make it a little bit more descriptive.
So um how about, uh I mean, so the, what if we just bullet point? So to speak, instead of have to try to craft a uh a name for it, you said like the customer experience initiative and so. Find and fix issues in the system that are inefficient and cause frustration between staff and constituents?
Yeah, like the.
And then sell.
I know, I feel like I operationalize everything, but.
So typically with your city goals, they're very high art overarching levels. You don't usually do a lot of bullet points underneath because then you're expecting staff to go through and and do every single one of those in the next two years. Um typically, you know, you have your vision as your twenty foot, twenty thousand foot level. Your goals are your five hundred foot level. Um and then under that is the actual actions and that's like the town halls or whatever. So I don't know if it's more like, I I think you were right on when you said, you know, like a verb, like prioritize customer experience or. Um develop customer experience to be better, something that lends itself. I think you're right into what you want it to result in. But if you get into too many bullet points, you can actually have staff get lost in that, unfortunately. Um I I want to be careful when you set your goals that these are the commission's goals and then we have to implement them. But if you get too specific, we may get lost in how to arrive at that specific.
I would also note that some of these goals were not um supposed to necessarily be staff done. And the sense of like celebrate good citizens and staff. In those cases, you know, the commission would um, we were talking about how we make sure that we. Celebrate our successes, you know, not just digging in and trying to find problems or find the successes, find the good, find the and celebrate the good to bring out the good news. So like, for example, like our our harbors have made a huge turnaround, right? Um and uh you know, city quarters got online, you know, access to public records. We've got some great things that are happening in our city, celebrating those. We've got citizens doing everyday hero stuff, you know, celebrating that win and building. That experience in our city um of both gratitude and finding out how do we make it so that? The frustrations that we have in our city, both from how the constituent relates to the city, but also how the city relates to the constituent. Comes from a more empathetic view.
And I apologize, Commissioner Solacia, if I shut down what you were trying to express. But you know, if it's something more along the lines of amplifying a positive external and internal cus- customer experience or something along those lines. I think, you know, maybe if you can express a little bit more of your, what you're desiring in that.
Amplify a positive customer experience, internal and external.
Because I think your intent is to turn it into a far more positive experience throughout throughout the city, correct?
And incentivizing downtown Warrenton, um that had so many things attached to it, so um I don't think you're gonna have that encapsulated in a one-word thing of incentivizing downtown development.
Revitalize?
I think uh. Because you have an urban rule, I think the idea is um. Continue to uh or incentivize downtown revitalization now and post Warrenton Urban Real District. That makes sense, because that's kind of a goal list. I sense hesitation and you're giving me the eye.
Well, we already incentivize it through a real. How do we create a downtown that serves, that serves the community in the way that we envision it? You know, so it's not just incentivizing, but it's like. Bring it to reality.
I think we have more uh town halls and meetings that focus on. Warrenton that this, the citizens can get involved with, give us more tasks, more ideas. I don't have to do a lot of them, but you know, reach out and take the polls.
Which I I don't want that to get lost, because if we say incentivizing downtown Warren, Warrenton, does it, does it limit our? Activities to only fit the incentivized part, you know?
Maybe.
Are you, is your goal to re-energize? Is your goal to, what is your goal?
The goal, so the customer experience is what you're talking about. But the the revitalization of downtown, the idea was that there's code requirements. Everything from parking standards to landscaping requirements to all these things related to downtown development that need to get looked at. You know, that are thoroughfares and are places where it's never going to happen. Like the revitalization of that will not happen if we don't figure out how to make the code incentivize that in the infill development aspect. And I mean, that's going to be Hammond too, I guess you could say, so um I guess you could say um.
What direction do you want to keep Warrenton downtown moving toward?
Well, I mean, the direction is that the the commercial revitalization of downtown and that's going to require.
So you want to continue commercial revitalization of downtown Warrenton?
Yeah, they take a few different steps, but. I I, we're not done.
No, I the the issue is that, you know, Urban Renewal is going to spend its money. And then it's basically done, right? And that's probably going to happen before the the district closes. So the goal was to move the needle now so that when Warrent closes, we can continue that uninterrupted, so to speak.
Do you want to use a different warrant than revitalization? I know that one kind of gets overused.
Downtown redevelopment, incentivize downtown redevelopment or. And that can apply to Hammond too, because downtown, we have two downtowns. Oh, you're being kind of quiet.
You guys are talking funny.
Continue to updates.
Just trying to build consensus.
You know, we've we've been working on the downtown. I mean, I've been on Urban Renewal since twenty thirteen and incentivizing downtown. You know, we're gonna put the poles underground, we're gonna do sidewalks and that, that uh got too expensive. Facade programs, I mean, there's lots of things that have been going on, urban oil funds are being spent. I I don't know. What other incentives we can give.
So we had talked at the at the retreat uh waivers for SDCs, landscaping, record waivers, parking waivers. Um including the marinas and those standards that we're gonna do for redevelopment. Mixed use required for residential uses in the commercial zones.
I think bringing the marina area, opening the marina area to downtown as best we can with the storage there. You know, I talked about the 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 land that's there in the old house and uh, you know, the waterfront.
So those are all included into that.
Right.
Bullet point, I I'm I'm not, I don't have any pride and ownership in the title, I'm just trying to get the title.
Maybe it's something like advanced strategic development of downtown Warrenton. So we are moving forward, but also learning from the past and making sure that we are investing in the right. Strategies that will actually help us actualize the downtown that we all want.
We'll say advanced downtowns development, because I mean Hammond's gonna be urban, we're gonna start working on the urban real plan for Hammond, meet that goal too.
Anything we can do to get people to want to come downtown and spend time is kind of incentivize businesses to come, want to come and be here also, so.
So so Mayor, am I hearing the word Warrenton you want stricken because, but I I mean downtown, the Hammond area is still downtown Warrenton.
I, yeah, I I, yeah, I mean, of course, I I just think to say the incentivizing down, yeah, downtown development, because that applies to any downtown that we have, which we have too.
Okay, so I'm hearing advanced strategic development of downtown Warrenton.
I'd say just advancing downtown development. Simplify it.
By reducing costs and fees and.
That those can be the strategies that we use.
I mean, we can make some incentives.
I think the goal can just be advancing downtown development and all that. There's uh design the Hammond fishing pier. Um I think that's.
I'm gonna try to talk to Crest, they've got a million engineers and and waterfront people that probably would love to make us a little plan, a little. Starter starter plan, you know?
Be great to get some starts on that, yeah. Um the next one would be review all volunteer committees and boards. Is that a fine statement? Oh, no, don't tell me.
Again, are we gonna review it? We're just gonna like look at it and say, check the box, or we're gonna say? You know, um optimize our volunteer committee and board experience, you know, because we want to make it, we want to make sure the peoples that come. To these meetings have their time, it's valued, and we're giving them opportunity to contribute in ways. So I think we need to be, we need to be doing more than just reviewing.
Does optimizing include cutting?
Yeah, it is, because we want to be efficient and we want to be respectful of people's time, so.
So optimize.
So I'm hearing review and optimize all volunteer committees and boards, is that correct?
Or the volunteering uh volunteer committee and board experience, because it's about also the people that are sitting on.
Minus review? Do um volunteer committees, boards.
Experience.
Volunteer in committees, very volunteer committee.
And boards experience.
All right, and then um review nuisance code. Um I think that's pretty straightforward. Okay. All right, be the nuisance code. I always, as a governmental, review doesn't necessarily mean that you don't do anything, just means you start the process of diving into it.
I know, but this is what our constituents are seeing us prioritize in our goals and so.
So reform the nuisance code?
Yeah, love it.
I I like our new guy, he's gonna make it nice for us.
I think we've spent some time re- redoing our nuisance codes and now we have an officer, we're just starting to get to work on it. We could review.
Well, we, we haven't updated the nuisance code since twenty eighteen, but so this would be to reform it so that was easier because the code enforcement officer actually suggested.
Maybe I'm thinking more like what the police chief did for us with the.
That's trailers and RV.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
Not under the nuisance code.
Okay.
All right, so reform the nuisance code and then ditch cleaning annual maintenance plan, develop and pass the ditch cleaning annual maintenance plan.
And make sure we support our new officer because he's going to be interim, he's going to be how it works.
Yep, absolutely. But in terms of the issue at this point, the ditch cleaning annual maintenance plan, that's good, we're good on that.
And then where the city manager recommends the wastewater treatment plan.
Ah, yes.
Uh, just one point on the last one, you said develop and pass, that implies you're doing an approval of that and.
We accept reports all the time.
You do, so I just want to make sure you're not expecting some formal pass through of full approval. I mean, it probably would be like a consent calendar update or something like that, that we have entered into a ditch agreement or ditch plan.
I mean, I, I would do it like the same as we do our pavement management program, our C I P, our, well, pavement management program is the best consultant does it. We look at it, thank you, adopt it, that is the city law, moving on, you know what I mean? But by adopting it, we don't do the same thing we do with the master plans where.
It's not going to be as formal of a process, I just want to make sure you're clear on that understanding, yes.
I'm not trying to say that we're going to be hacking up.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Well, that ditch needs.
If we did, people would say we're playing favorites.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, same with the pavement management program, you have a third party do it.
I just, I just wanted that point of clarity, so.
So, I mean, I think it's fine as it is, ditch cleaning, annual maintenance plan development, does that make sense?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, and, and then there's wastewater treatment plan. So I guess, uh, uh, get the funding and start building, that, that satisfy that?
Yeah, it would be phase one, city manager would not like.
In two years?
I plan to build it in twenty twenty seven.
Okay, so.
May not be completed by the time you revise the goals again, but it will be in, definitely in the works.
I need to Google some verbs.
That's a biggie.
And then I also think levies should be right there on the.
The problem with levies, other than I think that we should do it, but I think the issue with levies and the reason why it's on a lower goal rank is because it's a chronic issue that we're not going to solve in two years.
I'm good with that.
So if we go tell the citizens that and that's on the goal setting for the last fifteen years, it doesn't communicate.
For wastewater, I would say execute the wastewater treatment plan, treatment plant plan. Is it?
Is it part of the city manager and get it?
I would just say, you know.
You are, you are already in the design phase, you've just started that and you will be breaking ground.
This is development then?
Or it will be development of the wastewater.
I would, yeah, so secure money, secure the funds and develop the, the new treatment plan. By twenty twenty seven, that would be the goal.
Yeah.
By end of twenty twenty seven.
And I think that's the point, it's just so people, people know what we're trying to achieve, so we also have accountability, it's not just like vague, you know?
Okay, alrighty.
Alright, alright. I get the lowest one, the ditches, that no one sees.
Yeah, you know, okay, and the rest of the lower goals, I think those, is the commission okay with having those as so to speak, our sort of work plan review, but not necessarily in a formal goal?
Yeah, nice to have.
Okay, all right, we're going to do that, so with the, city manager, do you want to read out the goals?
Absolutely, so I have number one, amplify a more positive external and internal customer experience. Number two, advancing downtown development. Number three, design Hammond fishing pier. Number four, reveal, view and optimize all volunteer committees and boards experience. Number five, reform the nuisance code. Number six, ditch cleaning annual maintenance plan development. And number seven, secure funds and develop the wastewater treatment plant.
Good.
Not too many.
No, I think, I mean, there's a lot to do, but I think, I think that communicates our, our goals. I mean, the customer experience initiative is going to be done through task force with some staff support. The downtown development is going to be done in tandem with the planning commission and we also have the board review, which you're going on that task force. And then the ditch cleaning plan, the city staff is already on the process of, you know, intending to.
We have started that process, yeah.
The, the fishing piers and the CIP, it's just a matter of getting moving on the design. And I, I think most of this is doable in two years personally, so. I don't know, city manager, do you have a different opinion?
Uh, no, it is a very lofty, you don't always meet all your goals in two years, I will be honest. But that said, obviously you have excellent staff that will chip away at this and, and as long as you do your own part in this, you, you can advance probably very well on a lot of these goals.
You got, we got to do our part, so. All right, all right, so now we move on from, uh, from the goals. Or sorry, actually with those goals stated into the record, is there a motion to adopt those other goals?
I make a motion to approve the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven city commission goals as stated.
Seconded.
Move to seconded post, Salasio, to adopt the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty seven, uh, goals as stated. All those that are say I?
Aye.
All the posts, motion carries. Now we'll move on to eight A.
I'm sorry, was there a seven D, nine twenty five East Harbor?
Oh, when I said it, I thought we were doing it after eight A when I made it in the agenda order. And if the commission wants to bring that back up for the.
I have eight, eight B has eleventh street agreement, I'm sorry, mayor.
Thank you, you're right, you're right. All right, so, yeah, seven D, Commissioner Salasio, because I'm just going to note, so the person who's made the appeals technically, the person is actually related to me, although Oregon Ethics Commission does not declare that that specific relation is a conflict for the sake of the city's policies and all that. I am going to hand the gavel over for this item to Commissioner Dyer as the next senior in line. I will leave the room until the issues.
Um. Give them a moment. Okay, so as the commission members last meeting, we heard about nine two five East Harbor. They are still facing a six thousand dollar fee, I think it was reduced, it was ten thousand originally.
It was over nine thousand, I did waive three thousand of that upon their request and review of it, but it is currently six thousand. Do you want me to go into a little more detail? So the, in the public comment, they did make note that the person who had the trust passed away last year. And so there was some, they were kind of requesting all, if not most of it waived, but then they were also saying something about once the trustee had passed away. But a little background on this, so since around two thousand eighteen, a different person was in possession of this property and they were the one who stopped making payments, it was not the trust. So it is a little commingled in that that property was under a contract to own, but the other person stopped making payments both on the property. But they, they were making water payments up to a certain time and then they stopped making those payments. With the previous city manager, there was a little bit of a, the previous person came in and asked for the water removal, but there was still a house standing at that time. After that, the house fell down basically and was removed piece by piece. At that time though, the water service was not removed and that probably was around the time that we could have pulled it, but there was issues not just with the cost of removal, which currently I've been given an estimate around twenty five hundred dollars to remove it, which would have gone as a lien on that property. But there was also issues with the ODOT right away and having to get permits and it was just a lot beyond what our, our typical poll was. And so staff made the decision a couple of times not to pull it. I think the question is, well, should we have stopped charging them at that time? But I'll let you continue.
Yeah, my guess, I, the other three pieces to this that I, my understanding, please correct me. So one, it was the wrong address that was being billed versus.
That's not correct, so there was a little confusion about the properties because this person who had it under contract was, was under contract for eight different lots at the time. So when I came on the scene in conversations with the current trust, they never brought up the property address and I had been told by other people, the property address that was mentioned was adjacent. So they never asked about water connections or anything and it never came up in our conversations. So I, my assumption was, because there's nothing you can see, is that the property adjacent had this water line. So these, these people who had taken over, well, evicted the previous person, had assumed the lot. But like they said, they were unaware there was an outstanding bill. However, if they had looked up liens on the property, they should have seen it because that is recorded with the county. But I don't think they thought to look up any liens. But the, the address in question never came up in conversation with them, so they're not wrong when they said, we didn't, I didn't personally tell them about the lien because our conversations were about other things.
But wouldn't the lien have showed up during the title search and during diligence?
It should have.
I think that's part of the, something was missed in the process for, in the transfer of ownership where this information was not readily available. And to me, considering, you know, the challenges with the policy and staff turnover and everything else, I, I would just want to bring it to the commission to see if we would satisfy the request to only bill for the, I think it was twelve months was the request?
I would actually not make a recommendation of just twelve months because this goes back to twenty eighteen and when they assumed this after the eviction was, I believe, to twenty twenty three. So I would probably recommend going back to twenty twenty three versus going only a twelve month because there was items outstanding on this property that were in existence when they assumed ownership and that included things like back taxes. You know, there's, there were other liens on this property, I believe, at, at some point, whether the, you know, they rectified those or not or if they were done before, but whenever you take over a property like this, you usually should do some due diligence, in my opinion.
Well, we've come from nine to six, the new policy is going to be twelve. And we're talking about twenty four, twenty four months or thirty months?
Well, so, uh, they took ownership in twenty twenty three and I think these have been accumulating since twenty eighteen. I mean, you could look at, well, when did the building come down? I don't know, it's been a while. There's a lot, unfortunately, there's a lot of moving targets on this, so you, this one's a very hard one to unravel, quite frankly. It's, it's up to you to say, well, we would like to waive a certain amount. It's going to be hard to track backwards based on when a building was versus other, other items, quite frankly.
And building's been down for a long time. I think there's probably no intent on our side or the property owner's side of saying anyone did anything wrong, but I, I feel that we need to make a little bit more adjustment. Just because we're going to correct this in our next session when the thing. And I don't think I've seen another one like this in on the commission.
This one's a little more intangled, we do have some others, so where like the property that has burned down or, you know, the person passed away and it has gone into, you know, into a long time, but.
I, I could go for the, no more than twenty four months for them to pay, the last twenty four months.
So would you say the last twenty four months, this has been accruing since twenty eighteen? So do you want us to do twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen? Or do you want us to look at the last two, that's a problem because there's different rates at different times. And so for finance to untangle this, I think you should just say a lump amount to waive and not look at a specific timeframe.
Tom, why couldn't we just go for what about the reconnect fee is, which is twenty five hundred, right?
Well, they're currently, the line is still there.
Right, but if it had been pulled, it would have been twenty five hundred to put it back in and that's what probably should have happened.
So if you're saying you wanted to do that against what I had already waived, that would be a total of fifty five hundred, then you're reducing it by, which would probably put it around forty five hundred total, that is roughly.
Well, it's a water bill for one year or utilities.
Jessica, do you know that off the top?
The last two years.
So now include, just a reminder, that includes stormwater, sewer, trash. It isn't just the water line, she's going to get out her calculator.
But it's still a very rough number because I don't enter penalties anymore and I don't remember the minimum bill.
So if you're asking to reduce the last two years, it's roughly.
So one year is about sixteen hundred, maybe seventeen hundred, so two would be roughly double.
One sixty a month.
I did it, I did based on one thirty five, I think the minimum bill might be closer to one forty right now, but two years ago, it might have been closer to one thirty something.
Pick up on.
So you'd be roughly waiving about thirty two hundred if you did the last two, two years.
Three grand?
Waive three grand or charge three grand?
Charger three grand and felt good.
So you have one suggestion, you are both welcome to make your own suggestions or comments or agree.
Well, I was thinking twenty five hundred or three grand, I know this has been very convoluted and it's an unusual one, I think, I've heard a few things, I don't know exactly.
It's sad.
I don't want to, I don't want to bruise the city either from their recommendations, you know, either, but what's your thought?
You were shaking your head, I would be curious. Oh, no. I, you said twenty five hundred, I guess, is that plus a year?
I think, no, we're thinking three grand total to settle this thing.
Yeah, okay.
So then you would be reducing this by over sixty, eight hundred dollars, just so you're aware.
Yeah, I'm good with three thousand, yeah.
I, I, I think that we can't just do the one year, but I think three grand would be as low as I'd go.
So, so just keep in mind, you know, if we had waited twelve months and then pulled this at twenty five hundred, it would have been more than three grand, it would have been.
And they would have had to pay to reconnect.
Twenty five hundred plus the sixteen hundred would be still on the.
It would be four grand.
Be closer to four grand if we had done it, so if you want to go by those numbers, I'm just.
So, so if we were very forgiving, four grand would be what they'd have to pay if it was done perfectly.
Done correctly, yeah.
Okay, I, I, I'll go with that, I'd go with that.
So I'm hearing you would like to have remaining as a lien for payment, the four thousand dollars, that is correct, okay. All right, would you like to make a motion?
Just so I understand what we're waiving, if we take, before you did any waivers, just bring it down to four thousand. Cause they've also started making payments on this account, which adds to the math aspect a little bit. So I just want to make sure I'm perfectly clear on, we're going back to the initial waiver, bringing it to four thousand.
Minus any payments they recently made, yes. Okay, so would you like to make a motion, have somebody make a motion, Commissioner Dyer?
Yeah, I'll, I move that we make the total that they pay for grand, including the payments that they've.
Reduced by the payments they've made, yes.
That'd be my motion.
Seconded.
The move in seconded, uh, to reduce the cost to settle this to four grand by the property owner. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, united, we'll call it passed or settled.
Thank you, Tom.
Next we'll have, right before we got the item eight A, support for pursuit of the moderate income revolving loan fund for Fort Point Housing Project, I believe we have, uh, the applicant on Zoom, but city manager, do you want to introduce him?
Uh, yes, this was a request for support for the Fort Point Housing Project. They are asking to apply for a moderate income revolving loan, that is through the state and the city would have to approve that because that would mean a reduction in how much property tax when this, this property was developed. It would actually defer the tax, instead of that coming to the city of Warranton, it would go to repay this revolving loan.
Okay, Mr. Seth, Mr. Hagan.
I, good evening all, sorry, I had to figure out how to unmute. So yeah, I, the, I appreciate you all taking the time to discuss this and really that's what I would like this to, to be. I would like to just consider this as a, a start of a, what I would hope as a longer conversation because this is a rather robust program that the state recently introduced and, and passed. And OHCS has been tasked with deploying these funds. And so we are working closely with a, a number of the agencies that are, such as OHCS. We have an attorney out of Portland that is, is very familiar with how to deploy these and how to navigate these waters with the city as well as on the private sector. So really what, you know, for us, these funds would really go towards the horizontal, horizontal civil work, which includes grading, which is upwards of, you know, six hundred fifty thousand Q. which includes grading, um, which is upwards of, you know, 650,000 cubic yards of sand, which will have to be moved around that site, uh, whether that's off completely or um, rebalanced on the site. Uh, along with, you know, utilities, so that's, you know, storm drain, cur- uh, curb gutter uh, and utilities, um, including sewer and water and fiber and, and gas on the site. So um, for 450 units. And so uh, right now, that revolving loan fund is, has earmarked roughly 75 million. Um, over the next three years, 50 million of that is, is deployable within the next two years. Um, and for us, I would like to, you know, as a community, consider that. Um, and, and as a council, I would like, you know, us to consider that as well, just on the project side and see how we can um, capture some of these funds for some much needed housing.
Mr. Hagan, uh, just state again, um, and maybe it's just my ears, but um, state again, how much was the amount that you were looking to get from that fund? And how much is, how does that fund work? And how does it affect the city outside of simple, like going to detail beyond just property tax?
Yeah, so again, my, this is a rather robust program. And so I don't feel like I'm, I'm going to necessarily be able to give the actual program just in trying to, this evening. So I would um, I can.
Is it fair to say, is it fair to say that what it is, is that the city agrees to waive uh, property taxes or the increase on property tax values for 10 years? Which then the state then takes that tax collection because the city is actually, that tax is actually being collected. It's just the city's losing it and it goes as a pass through from the county tax collector to the state to fund the fund, the loan program, which is given to you, correct?
That is correct. However, there are also um, costs that the developer would bear, which effectively cover the, the carrying costs is what I would call them on behalf of the city. So the city.
Administrative fees for processing.
Yeah, exactly. So the city's not held completely carrying the bag, you know, speaking candidly. But that is, uh, yes, Mayor, you are correct in, in the general layman approach of, of how the city is effectively a pass through from the state to the, to these developments, private developments around the, the state.
Gotcha. Commissioners, have any questions of the applicants?
I just, I just kind of have a tough time having the city uh, lose tax revenue and we're such a low tax per thousand. I don't know where that would gains us at all.
And do we have any estimates on what the financial impact would be to the city?
So we reached out to the county assessor's office, but they can't project unimproved. As, we don't even have a final site design, you know, what, you know, the actual square footage and all that. Um, so it's hard to project an actual number. Um, you would have to look at, well, this is 450 units. Um, some of those are single family homes, some are apartments. But we can't give you a, a total number at this point. And keep in mind, they're built in phases too, so they wouldn't all be in existence at the beginning. I think the intent is 120 units in, in at least the first year or two, so three years.
Um, Seth, but my understanding of this program was to incentivize affordable housing production, but Fort Point is not all affordable housing, right? Some of it's market rate and some of it is built for rent.
Correct, yeah. Councilwoman, I would say that affordable, I think, is an ambiguous term. You know, affordable can really mean low, low income, which we do have, you know, a, a community development partners. And the, the Northwest Housing Authority are partnering um, right now with us on the, on really what is the nine acre site, we call it, or the, for the 210 apartments. So yes, we do have an affordable component there uh, within Fort Point. And yes, these funds can be allocated towards that. Again, this is really for all the horizontal. And there's a lot of, a lot of work that needs to go into making this site shovel ready. Kind of going back to your, you know, the, the quote unquote word affordable. I, I can use that also, or I would also, I guess, associate workforce housing, really the 80 to 120 area median income target as, as affordable as well. Um, HUD would recognize that as the housing of, of urban development. Uh, would also, I think, um, consider affordable as, as workforce as well. And that is what the BTR is going to be, roughly 120 to 180 units of, of those single family residents are going to be allocated towards that, that market position or that, that target demographic.
Yeah, thank you. My other question be besides this revolving loan fund, what other financing strategies have you looked into or pursued? Because this seems really challenging for us as a city to be able to, to move forward with without this revenue.
Yeah, again, I, I would like to absolutely revisit this in a more, I guess, structured environment where we can, I, I want to make sure that, you know, we have the opportunity to ask these high level questions. And, and I would appreciate the opportunity to revisit uh, this conversation down the road, you know, in the next month or two, maybe three, with, you know, answers to some of these detailed questions, such as how much would it cost the city per unit? Um, or what's the carrying cost associated per unit um, for the city? So I, I'm happy to, you know, put my, put our resources behind that and, and answer those questions in greater detail. I will add, you know, I, I would say uh, the, the site, as everybody I think is aware, is, is for 450 units in total, right? 210 apartments, 30 townhomes and roughly 200, um, is that 210 uh, single family residents? So there is a, a mix of product type here and we would be um, you know, we would be approaching this in phases in the financing for this, you know, uh, we would be, you know, realistically targeting anywhere between 180 and, and 240 units worth of funding from the state. And that varies anywhere between 20 and 25,000 um, per, per unit, which covers, you know, covers the entire, candidly, covers um, a, a very healthy tranche of our, of our uh, sources for the horizontal. And again, that is all utilities, all curb, street gutter and dirt work.
A, a ballpark figure, this is very rough, if these were kind of at the low end of um, housing value. And I didn't do the entirety, but you know, ballpark figure of 2,500 dollars of taxes a year for a, a mid-range home in the city. Um, well, if you times that by 400, that's about 450,000 dollars a year. So that's a, that's a low ballpark, but.
I'll put it this way.
We're looking for some numbers.
Costco's assessed value is 13, you know, 13 and a half million dollars. And if you take urban renewal, if you take levies, bonds, all the stuff, just the permanent rate tax, which is what will be shaved off. You know, for example, Costco is paying 20,196 dollars. Walmart, 25,224 dollars. And that's off of uh, Walmart's a uh, 17 million dollar value on the assessed value, so. As you know, our general fund budget is, for permanent rate prop taxes is about 1.1 million.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so.
That's our total.
And that pays for administration, fire, police and planning, correct?
Which phase would the uh, lower income housing come in?
They are trying to build right away.
The lower.
Commissioner Dyer, yep.
Okay.
They have been reaching out. They want to break ground very soon.
I'm just going to say that um, when I talked to the, the, at least earlier with County, that's County, um, shouldn't seem to, shouldn't seem to think that this was a good fit for us. But uh, I would also note that the big complaint that we often get um, is the problem of revolving door of department heads, particularly in the planning department. Um, and I would say that part of that probably has to do with, you know, being a cash poor city. We don't pay our department heads like we could, you know, or we should, sorry. And that's just because we don't know what financial means. And so um, pulling more out of the perm fund doesn't address that issue very well.
I would be reluctant to put more pressure on infrastructure and not get something back. I would be reluctant to do this.
So the question before us isn't whether or not um, I'd be, I mean, obviously because we don't have a statement and all that here. But the question is that, does the commission wish to revisit this uh, with, with refined numbers? Or does it feel like uh, it, does it want to close the book on that?
Ma- Mayor, if I may, apologies to, to interrupt, but I mean, the, this is a deferment of funds. Uh, you can't necessarily lose what you don't have. And, and considering that the 450 home or 450 units of housing will be coming in uh, quicker with these funds. I would argue that there's going to be, you know, a, a stimulant of, you know, affordable housing and, and a workforce base that is going to benefit this town directly uh, through intrinsic, you know, whether that's through e- economic stimulant or through um, uh, through a number of other different, you know, whether that's through utility uh, uh, utility, uh, payments through utilities or uh, you know, any other, I guess, revenue stream that the city can capture. So um, you know, I would say that you, you can't really necessarily lose what you don't have.
Commissioners.
Well, you can't pay what we don't have either. I mean, it's, it's a tough for our, our uh, amount of tax money comes in here. Other people in town would feel pretty uh, I think it'd leave a sour case in them.
Yeah, I um, I'm all for more housing and especially affordable housing and different types of housing to meet the crisis. Um, but I don't know if this is the best strategy for our community. And I think, thinking long-term, this would really not, not be a good fit for us.
I'm very reluctant when it doesn't, I'm not um, ready to go.
So is, do I, do I understand the commission's uh, inclination is to not revisit this issue and to decline uh, further consideration of it? Oh, I see a nodded heads.
That's a yes from me.
I'm always happy to see more numbers to make a more informed decision. Um, but happy to hear from the other commissioners to see.
I, I could listen to more because he didn't really, didn't have much information for us to even explain to our constituents why we'd even entertain this. If he gets something more, I'll listen one more time, but that's, that's, that'd be it on me.
Okay, um, well, I said a date for more information. Do you want to do it next?
We could listen to something else, but yeah.
I think that's, he said he'd have more information in a month.
Yeah, I would, I would say this though, I mean, it's the applicant's burden of proof. I don't think staff needs to be burning a lot of time.
I agree.
Get his numbers unless it's, you know, an impact that you want to.
All I'm hearing is you would like this scheduled for a discussion item at a April meeting?
Does the commission really want to go for the discussion or does it want to get the numbers and decide whether it wants to go in discussion?
I want to get the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're asking for a submittal in April from the developers?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'd love to see other strategies that they've looked into, just so we know that this isn't like the first or the, you know, what else have they pursued?
And if whatever known uh, exemptions or variances that are already being accommodated at this time too as well.
Yeah.
All right, okay, moving on.
Thank you all.
Um, to the uh, Commissioner Slosio, what?
Oh, I just said, thank you for your time.
He said thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move on to um, go to the order.
Uh, you had an 8B.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I was pointing at my office today, so it's been uh, been interesting. Um, all right, so I had a few infiltration in the office. Uh, so seven, uh, no, we already did that. So this is 8B, this is the 11th Street agreement. Uh, same individuals, um, so City Manager, do you want to take it off? And I think Seth presenting it all on this.
No, this is actually um, not necessarily the developers. This is a pass through to a private property or a private entity, 3PO systems. Um, but this was, just a reminder, this was agreed to at a previous um, city commission meeting. This is simply the agreement before you, and I apologize. Um, there was a lot back and forth with um, their legal, our legal, just to make sure we're all in agreement. And then of course, the last minute formatting. So unfortunately, it was a delay in getting it into your Dropbox in time, and that is my fault. Um, but I did want to get this before you because you had already approved it. Um, this, if you remember, is the agreement for the sewer line that's to be installed on 11th Street, that it will be in a private um, holding capacity for three years with the agreement only to connect um, Fort Point to this during that time. And then make sure it is first tested before it goes to that private party, um, that it meets our city code. And then when it is ready to come to the city, that it is tested again and made sure to meet our city code and standards. Um, just a reminder, we did receive money from the county to upsize the line on this one, uh, which is in this agreement. We have 250,000 dollars that we are paying toward the sewer line, um, because the hope is at some point to connect out there on Ridge Road, down the road, some other um, entities to this. The agreement states only Fort Point will be connected to this. It is not for them to make profit, profit from connections on this line. Um, it is simply that they're holding it in a private capacity for those three years.
And isn't this a financing strategy for them? Because if they have the private infrastructure, they get credits?
I, I believe so for the 3POs, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know all the details on that though. But that was why there was this request.
Yeah.
And we, this is not your typical, but we did agree to this process. Um, and our, our legal has reviewed this.
Um, all right, is the commission wish to take time to review this or does it feel ready um, to uh, act on?
We've already agreed to it. I'm ready to.
Yeah, okay. Is there a motion to approve the development agreement for sewer line improvements between Fort Point, um, between the city, uh, Fort Point and 3PO networks?
So moved.
So moved in seconds, Slosio, Dyer to approve the development agreement for sewer line improvements between City Warrant and Fort Point Partners and 3PO Networks. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. All right, go to the order. We're starting with Commissioner Dyer.
Well, I have nothing to add too much, but uh, it was nice to see the sun the other day.
All right, Mr. Phil.
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Slosio.
Um, I want to say I loved the urban renewal sign on the project by the high school. And I, I think it was Tony's idea um, for that. And I think it just helps the community know what these projects are funding and see the improvements. So I'm excited to get a, a sign for, for Fenton Building once we start hammering away, but that was a great idea, so thank you.
Um, I don't have much, or City Manager, sorry.
Um, I just wanted to mention, we have um, hired a new city planner who is expected to start April 1st.
Same, where's? All right, um, just uh, note that um, looking forward to executing our goals and I'll have the tasking statements out in, in a month, so, so. Yes. I'll take a look at one year. All right, without that, uh, we'll move on to a adjournment of this and move into Urban Renewal Agency. Uh, we'll call this meeting to order, Urban Renewals. Has the roll call been taken? All right, consent calendar, the meeting minutes for February 25th and um, this year and December 4th of last year. Is there a motion to approve the consent counters presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second and to approve the consent counters presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. All right, uh, we have no public hearing, so we'll go on to the consideration of um, Warrant and Urban Renewal Advisory Committee recommendation.
Uh, so you have before you a recommendation and to follow the trail, this was a recommendation um, by the Marina Advisory Board that was put forward and the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee was also unanimous in their um, recommendation of this as well. This is regarding um, consideration of the EDOC at Warrant and Marina as a future possibility for urban renewal projects, which you will be discussing further in a joint session with Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
All right, is, I remember right, when we had the joint session, the EDOC is the commercial dock, right? And CDOC is the one that was previously, okay.
That's one we just discussed earlier.
Yeah, and so they're asking for um.
Consideration to, to, to move this forward as a possible project in that discussion.
Issue with moving it forward for consideration.
Yeah.
Um, the recommendation specifically is um, uh, needs replacement, so um, yeah, okay, um, recommending provide funding for that. All right, so the recommendations actually provide funding for the planning prom, uh, projects. So by saying yes to this, we're basically.
It says, consider providing funding.
Uh, the recommendation titles for the provide funding for the Warrant and Green EDOC replacement when planning upcoming projects. And so uh, as far as I'm concerned, the title is the, is the action item, so to speak, a narrative, just the explanation. But um, being that as it may, um, does the Urban Renewal Agency wish to commit to? But being that as it may, does the Urban Renewal Agency wish to commit to. Putting EDOC funding into its upcoming projects?
I think it's a good use of the phone.
Yeah. Okay, we won't set a specific amount because we'll do that once we get to the thing, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so our response will be that we approve the recommendation, but will not specify the amount until such time as the agencies convene to decide those. Yeah? So is there a motion to accept the recommendation as stated prior?
Move to accept.
Seconded.
Move it seconded, opposed, Silacio to accept the recommendation as noted prior. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries, consideration food cart pod, finalization.
Thank you. So I was overly ambitious when I said I had finalized the food cart pod in the last fiscal year. I still had a couple of punch items. Unfortunately, I did not get to in my busyness. And so there, it's in some respects smaller items, but there is not currently any budget in urban renewal for this. So I would respectfully request the amount before you to finish out the food cart pod. This includes landscaping that we were required to do as part of our redo of the food, of the parking lot. We are required to do additional planters. And then I would also like to make a uniform look of picnic benches, including one, at least one that has ADA access for wheelchairs. And all of those will look the same with the umbrellas in them, and you should have pictures of those in your packet. I also want to get some trash cans that are larger and match. We had an urban renewal one out there that is very tiny, and it's, it's overflowing, and I'd like to make that all look nice before I wrap up that food cart pod.
I just have one quick question. On the trash cans, have we experienced any issues of people gleaning through them?
We have not yet, but I think that is because they are right next to the food carts themselves. We made them responsible for them because they also have to remove the trash. So I think they're removing most of it by the end of day. I don't know if anything's occurring overnight, but I've not heard of any vandalism. I did have about a year ago, a comment about trash blowing over to the business next door. But I only saw that occur a few times, and I, I think we've been doing a pretty good job of keeping up with that. And it is a little hard for them to blow through because there is a grid of fencing in between.
Any questions, Seth?
I was wondering, who will maintain the umbrellas and with the wind that we have?
That will be my responsibility, since I manage the food cart pod. Yeah.
I will say, in your defense, City Manager, you said that you got overly ambitious. I think you probably were able to do it, should you have managed 90 some odd units of storage. I, I think.
I did focus on cleaning out 90.
Don't consider any failures on your part on that one.
I, I re, I did re-prioritize during that time, so, yeah.
Yeah, so. All right, is there a motion to approve the finalization food cart pod for the not to exceed amount of 20 grand?
So moved.
Move in seconded, opposed, Silacio to approve the finalization food cart pod not to exceed $20,000. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries, no executive session, and we will adjourn.